It's seven o'clock and I'd like to call together the May first, 2025 School Committee Meeting. You will please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the very highest for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as a great universalist for all. Thank you very much. This evening, we have our consent agenda voted to 28 minutes from the April 10th, 2025 meeting, as well as bills and payroll. They're looking to accept us.
A move that we accept the second agenda.
Aye.
Aye.
Second agenda.
Second agenda. I'll listen favorably to get by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye unanimously. So first opportunity for interested citizens, so if there's anybody with us this evening in person or on do that would like to speak for the school committee. On crack at it now, there's a second opportunity at the end of the, at the end of the meeting.
We have another meeting.
We're not seeing how we'll close that meeting. Our recognition portion of the evening is typically, we typically have a student representative report. Those folks are occupied tonight and we'd like to recognize Stacy for her contribution this year, however, she is going to be rolling into the meeting mid-meeting, so we'll skip over that for now and I'll turn it over to super attendant.
Charlie.
Ellie Clancy for his recognition.
Yes, I better expand since we don't have student representatives.
We'll catch up.
All right. So I have a few announcements and a few acknowledgements. First acknowledgement, we had a wonderful spring wellness night, which was held on Tuesday, April 29. Special thanks to Natalie Coteau and we have lot called for leadership of recognizing events. High school prom is tomorrow night. I believe it's that time of year again, May 1st already. Our town meeting is on Tuesday, May 6th. And prior to the meeting at six o'clock, we're going to have a Shaker Lane Building Committee presentation to update everybody. It'll be held in the middle school cafeteria from six to 6:50 PM. So I encourage everybody, if they have some time to come out and hear the update, we have question answer opportunity as well. We have a spring band concert coming up on May 7th, the high school. Town elections are going to be held on Saturday, May 10th. As you like. Middle school play, I don't, it's a madness, is going to be held on the weekend of May 16th. I'd also like to congratulate our high school national honor members who were inducted. Actually Wednesday night. It's always a special celebration to have our students meet the criteria to be inducted into the National Society. So Dr. Harrington has that opportunity to be there every year and it's a proud moment for the school. In advance, I'd like to thank Mia Clements. She will be performing the National Anthem on Monday, Monday afternoon about two o'clock. For the 5:50 King Street groundbreaking. If you're free, recommend you and you should come out and experience it. There'll be some food, barbecue and governor's going to be there as well. So it'd be a great opportunity for all of you. And Mia will also be singing the National Anthem on our town, we had our town meeting, or correctly, on Tuesday evening. Very fortunate to have Mia, talented singer. And that's it for my.
Dr. Clancy today had one.
You may.
Just in place of the students, so the last minute one, but well deserved and she's here tonight. Dr. Affinity is our science department coordinator and longtime science teacher, veteran teacher. She was recently recognized by Moderna and the Massachusetts Science for the, and the Massachusetts Science and Engineering Fair for her outstanding teaching and guidance of students in research and just science, scientific experimentation. They're just all around excellent teaching. They are pleased to award her with $2,500, $500, which goes directly to Dr. Affinity for her decision on how she might want to spend that and $2,000 to Luton High School. And then I have an explanation here, this money is to be used at her discretion for professional development supplies and equipment for her classroom or for the school's science department. And she's already dedicated that, from what I understand, to the STEM research club that he has been founded at Luton High School and has helped, has helped grow. So I just wanted to recognize that.
Excellent, thank you for sharing. Very much. I will circle back and recognize Stacy when she's able to get here. The update says around 7:30. We'll move into our presentation portion of the evening. We've got three presentations scheduled. The first of which is State of the Curriculum Report, Part Two. I'll read the description here for the record and then we'll take everybody in order. So six to 12, History and Social Science Curriculum Coordinator, Krista McManus, provide an update on the history and social science curriculum. K to 12 World Language Coordinator, Elizabeth Kelly, provide an update on the world language curriculum. K to, I'm sorry, six to 12, Science Curriculum Coordinator, Valerie Finery, provide an update on the science curriculum. We have discovered 30 minutes. You can slice and dice that any way you like, but feel free to go over. This is something that we always really enjoy.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, my name is Krista McManus. I am the History and Social Science Curriculum Coordinator for grades six through 12. So next slide, please. The first slide sort of gives you a highlight reel of our department. And for example, which I'll talk about more in a moment, we were given a grant by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the genocide education. And so that was for this fiscal year and I'll, like I said, I'll talk more about that in just a minute. The picture on the right hand side of the screen is the AP US History class. They go to our Littleton Historical Society and do archival research with the people at the historical society. They then create a project and they present it to the public. So this was past year's picture, but as you can see, there's all kinds of students milling around and showing off their often history skills. In addition, we have the eighth grade civics project that is coming up and the students are currently working on that. And they're using Generation Citizen curriculum in order to facilitate that. Lastly, the sixth grade will host their annual country expo, which I will discuss a little bit more about on a later slide. Next slide, please. So we are very lucky this year, we have been awarded a grant from DESI on genocide education. It was a one-year grant and we tried our best to spend it as much as we could. And we were really lucky to have had professional development on the January, February and March professional development days. And this was held with Facing History in Ourselves, a partnership with them. In addition, we had teacher attendance at professional development workshops at Salem State University. We attended workshops on Bosnian genocide and LGBTQ plus populations before during an act of Holocaust. Not only that, but we were able to purchase lots of classroom resources for the Facing History in Ourselves class, as well as the libraries at Russell Street, Littleton Middle School and High School classroom books for the English departments. And we were really proud to have brought to our community two events. One was held in the fall and one was held in the spring. The Donland Film Screening occurred in October. We screened the film and then had a Q and A with the producer and director of the film. And then we also had a partnership with Ruben Moore Library to read the Community Wide Read Book of the Years of Zero. And we also had an in-person Q and A with the author, Sang T. And I will say, of course, any survivor of genocide is very powerful to hear from. But to be able to read his book and then to speak directly with him was incredibly powerful for many of our community members and our students. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. So this, now I'm going to sort of go in and sort of give you a snapshot into what our classrooms look like on a daily basis. So this is Mr. Burrito's sixth grade social studies class. And as you can see, the students have, they get homework choice boards every, or a few homework choice boards a unit. And so they get to do some kind of really creative things with that. I can speak personally, as having a sixth grade student myself, we had to make bread the way that the ancient Mesopotamians did, albeit we probably subdue human ingredient that maybe the ancient Mesopotamians did not have. But there's also other things, as you can see in the pictures, where the students have a lot of, they like to cook a lot and bake for their classmates. But then they also could make board games and other kinds of creative projects as a way to enrich the curriculum. Next slide, please. In addition, in Mr. Burrito's class, he was so excited to tell me all about this. This was a thing that he found using iPad technology, where students actually get to look at 3D models of ancient human skulls. And they get to sort of become detectives and start to learn a little bit more about ancient humans. And so they loved it, they ate it right up. And of course, too, Littleton Tradition is the country expo that will be occurring in June very soon. This has been a staple in the curriculum for many, many years. And Mr. Burrito has done a really great job streamlining the process for the students. Each student is assigned a country and they must research that country, create a poster board, as you can see in the picture. And then they have to present it at the expo itself. Oftentimes you'll see students dressed up to represent their country in some way. And they'll also have food items and drink items from their, from their country. So the expo this year will be on Thursday, June 5th, and we would love to invite you to attend if you would like. Next slide, please. Thank you. The eighth grade civics class has been completing some engaging activities. One to include a March Madness Bracket Challenge, which pit different amendments against each other to see which one is more important. And they are now actively working on the civics project, which will culminate in a few of our students presenting a civic showcase at the DCU Center in Worcester on June 2nd. Next slide, please. Moving on to the high school, Ms. Moore's class and honors ninth grade world history are taking a deeper dive into studying imperialism by reading a historical fiction novel. And students are able to apply historical concepts that they have learned and gain the perspective of a colonized culture versus a colonizer culture. Next slide, please. This is something that we are getting really excited about and using in the history department overall. But this is a great example of us using AI in a different way in our classroom. So Mr. Biscanus's US History One students were evaluating AI to look at how accurately they depict certain aspects of history. On the left-hand side, you'll see that the students found that AI does not accurately really talk about or discuss all of the major causes of the American Civil War. And on the right-hand side, you'll see that the students looked at an AI-generated visual to see if it accurately, accurately represented the Civil War as well. And spoiler alert, it was missing some things. I don't think there are extra fingers or anything like you sometimes see in AI, but it was missing some things on the left. Next slide, please. This actually happens to be my class. In the honors US History One classes, students are required to write a research paper about anything that they want that has to do with the American Civil War. So for this paper, I encouraged them to use AI in order to help brainstorm a topic, write their thesis and create an outline for the essay itself. They were actually able to use AI up to a level two on this AI scale that you see pictured. I then also used AI to generate two papers about the American Civil War. The students graded the papers according to the, for the assignments and they reflected on the experience accurate. And I will say it was really eye-opening for both them and for me. And as you can see, there's one piece of student feedback that was incredibly eloquent about how the essay sounded very mechanical and it did not sound very human. Next slide, please. In our US History Two courses and Mr. Walsh's class, you'll see that he's engaging students in learning about women's suffrage by asking them to visually represent the material. This student created a Barbie-themed visual to represent women's rights and the right to vote. Next slide, please. I'm also proud to say that this class is a class that I brought to Littleton High School this year. And this is an elective class and we decided to engage with our community by having Littleton Police Department come to the students. And as you can see, they actually had to pull me over in my car and I had to pretend in a fictional scenario to sort of take out my license and registration and see what happens when one is pulled over by a police officer on a road stop. In addition, we worked with a local defense attorney and he came in to help work with students on particular case scenarios. And then we also actually went on a field trip to MCI Shirley, which is a maximum security prison close by. And students met with incarcerated individuals. And I have to say, it was an incredibly powerful experience for all of those who attended. We also engaged in a mock trial and that gives them real world experience as much as the real world can get you between the walls before Littleton High School and insight into how the trial process works. Next, we have the Intro to Economics elective. We are lucky to have Ms. Smith teach two economic classes at the high school. But this is an awesome project that she does that students get super into. So they actually have a project that's kind of like Shark Tank. And so the students have to create a product, they have to create a presentation and they have to go in front of a panel of sharks. And so this particular project, she sent me a bunch and I thought this one was really interesting. The students created a hair tool vending machine. And so this is meant to go in a public restroom. So if you need to spruce up your hair when you're out in public, you could pay total rents, these hair tools. And then the business itself would profit and the business restroom wouldn't, would profit. And then for my last slide, I have another one of my classes, which is Facing History in Ourselves. This class was previously an elective just for 12th graders at the honors level. But to be more inclusive, I wanted to open it up to students at the college prep level and also open it up to 11th grade. We are very lucky to have had several guest speakers this year, including a survivor of the Holocaust, a survivor of the Bosnian genocide, a member of the Maine Wabanaki Truth and Reconciliation Commission, and many more. And we participated in the community-wide book read as well and listened to the author Sang T. Tell us a little bit more about his experience surviving that. So this concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Hi, this is wonderful. I'm excited to see the breadth of what, what students are able to experience in your curriculum. That's very exciting.
I'll say, I think you guys do a great job. I love the fact that we're not just simply teaching historical events out of a textbook. I love all the novels and the perspectives and the understanding students gain from that. My questions are, is there any chance we're going to bring back the Washington DC trip for the eighth graders?
That is a wonderful question. I do not know the answer to that. That might be the answer better students, Mr. Everhart, at the middle school, but we can. I'm not sure of the answers to that currently.
Fine. I love the criminal justice, the fact that you got pulled over. I've always said, I've always said, no, seriously. If we could graduate everyone with what the expectations are when you get pulled over, it's a lifelong lesson because when an officer is approaching a vehicle, it's a high-stress environment for them and they don't know what's in the vehicle, what's happening. So there are a number of things that you can do as a passenger versus the driver to sort of de-escalate that situation so that it's safe for everybody. And you know, I believe that those tips and tricks were probably passed along. So I think that that's wonderful. Yeah, lots of cool stuff happening. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm so pleased to see all these highly engaging activities, a lot of like project-based learning sorts of efforts here. I was wondering, are teachers coming up with all of these ideas themselves? It seems so grounded in what students are interested in and you know, what, what supports do they have for coming up with, with all of these great projects?
Sure. So I mean, I could tell you from the research paper perspective, but I did with, using AI with my students. I, I actually really sort of, I've been learning about AI, dipping my toes a little bit in the water, but I'm sure as to how to bring it into the classroom. And so I will say that I, I did Google a lot to see how other teachers are incorporating AI. And I decided that I, I'd always give sample papers to the students so that they can kind of see expectations of what an A paper might look like versus what a C paper might look like. But then I thought, well, what if I gave them AI-generated papers to see if they can, A, recognize that it was AI and B, sort of really dive into, it wasn't any good. And the feedback was really startling because they were like, those papers stinks. Like, yeah. Yeah. It does, they're like, it just sounds so like a robot, roto. Yeah, yes, it does. That's great. So anyway, going back to your questions, some of it, of course, is trying to appeal, you know, using AI in that way as a building block of the writing process kind of also takes away like the, the like, oh, I want to use AI on the paper later, right? In a bad way, like this is allowing you to use it, but teaching you to use it in a productive way. But it can be a really helpful tool, but we all have to sort of navigate how to learn ourselves. And I even said that to the students, like, I'm learning right along with you all, so you're kind of my guiding pigs. But they actually, they, they got really excited about it.
Very, very timely. So are you, so it's your impression that teachers are mostly, you know, coming up with these projects themselves? Or do you have some underlying curriculum that they rely on when they're not doing these exciting things?
We definitely have curriculum in every one of our classes that, you know, is aligned, of course, to state standards. And we do use textbooks still in the traditional manner in some way, shape or form in many of the classes. But the old way of teaching history, how we probably all learn by memorizing facts, memorizing dates is very much a thing of the past. We would rather students apply critical thinking skills that they learned in history to obviously real life. And so I, I find that in my department, that teachers are finding these cool tools and then capitalizing on them. Right? Like Mr. Burrito with those ancient human skulls. And otherwise, sometimes, of course, these might be a suggestion that wasn't a textbook. It could have been an idea that they found online or it could have been an idea that they jumped up themselves.
That's really fantastic that they feel like they have the liberty to take advantage of those teaching moments. And, and so great that you're using Generation Citizen and Facing History in Ourselves, some really great resources. So. Oh, and I had a question about the mock trial. Is that, are you involving a lawyer in that or how far does the mock trial process go?
It's a great question. I did not do that this year. I, the mock trial process is a several week process. And because the class was so big, I think because it was the first time offered, the students, we actually had a jury as well as witnesses and attorneys. And so the students work and they like work with each other for weeks beforehand. And then we actually hold the trial in class. And this year, actually, as our judge, we had Mr., well, the vice principal was the judge, so he got to come into the class. And the students, I think, take it a little bit more seriously, not that they didn't take it seriously, but they're like, oh, just misjudging us. Like this is like a little bit more legit, if you will. And so I, I do, I have worked with defense attorneys in the past, as I have one come to the classroom. And he's always said, oh, if you ever need any help, but I haven't engaged one, I didn't engage one this time.
Yeah. Well, kudos.
What was the case?
Oh, it was a murder case where a student, a college student was murdered potentially, allegedly from one of her best friends from high school while they were at a concert. So the students in fact found them not guilty. Yeah. But they were interested.
I mean, it was common to death concerts. Yes. Well, thank you for all you're doing. It sounds amazing.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you. Next up, six to 12 World Curriculum Coordinator, Elizabeth Kelly. Welcome. See you again.
Hi. Hi, everyone. I'm Liz Kelly and I am the Latin teacher at Littleton High School and the sixth through 12 World Languages Curriculum Coordinator. Thanks for inviting me to share with you some updates regarding world languages in Littleton Public Schools. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the seal of biliteracy again. Curriculum alignment updates in global citizenship in our department. As you can see on this slide, I'm reminding everyone of our departmental focus on proficiency levels, how time on learning can impact these levels. And then some of the opportunities we offer students to earn recognition, national exams and essay contests. And then there's also a photo of some of the visiting students and teachers from Vidal lead Spain when they came last fall. This visit is part of the yearly homestay exchange that happens for us in October here. And then in June, our students go to Spain. I was lucky enough to Chafron last year in Spain. We were there for two weeks. But and Littleton, our middle school teacher, Amy Tetro is going this year, but it is really due to the work of Marco Gellen, high school Spanish teacher who organizes and runs the whole experience for Littleton students, which is just amazing. The next slide, please. As a reminder, I wanted to talk a little bit about the seal of biliteracy. As a reminder, the Massachusetts State Seal of Biliteracy is awarded on a student's high school diploma for demonstrating the level of intermediate high proficiency in English and another language. I've had some questions in the past on the process and specifically how we ask students, how we involve them. So I thought I'd talk about that tonight. And specifically, since we already test students for English with MCAS, I thought I'd talk about the process and testing of languages other than English. So we start with a formal district notification that goes out to everyone every fall. I visit with junior class advisories at the high school in the spring, since this is a senior year experience, so getting them ready. But we also start talking to students a lot earlier. We had some information sessions with sixth grade and eighth grade classes, talking about courses, but also we mentioned the seal of biliteracy. There is a heavy focus on it at the eighth grade parents' information night at the high school. We, in the fall of student senior year at the high school, we put on announcements and we have a meeting during flex block. And what we're doing at that point is inviting seniors to apply. That's part of the process, part of the state requirement. And all they do is they say, we'd like to test. But during the application process, we also reach out in the language classes that we offer. We try to touch base with English, English language staff to identify possible heritage speakers that we might be missing in our other courses. And then we sponsor testing on a Saturday in January for anyone who applies. The testing can take quite a bit of time. It can take up to four hours for students. So that's why we do it on a Saturday morning. We also offer retesting in one of the domains if a student's score is below, just below the level they would need in that one domain. We do that on our, kind of our own time. The intermediate threes, who are mostly junior students in language courses at the high school kind of get a practice round because we offer it in class to the juniors. We sort of tell them it's a lot like the PSAT as a practice, but it also, it would come for them if they did qualify. They did reach that level. And then there is another, there's an alternative path to earning the seal, which is that a student could get a four or a five on a language AP test and that would also qualify them. But the problem with many of the students who take APs and languages is that they take it in the spring of their senior year and the results would not come until after graduation. That's another, another pathway. So we did, we do have some impressive results so far and we expect some additional results as students continue to test this spring. In, in Latin, we had nine students who earned the seal. In Spanish, we have 11 students who burned the seal so far. And in Portuguese, we have two students. These are, we have one heritage and one self-study student. In earning distinction, I did want to say their names because this means they reached the level of advanced on, on the other language test. In Latin, it's Joy Hendrickson, Callum McNeil, Isabel McCurdy, Owen Patel and Carson Smith. In Spanish, it's Rachel Rodriguez. In Portuguese, Evan McKay. And I also wanted to mention Evan because he has earned the seal in, at the level of distinction in Portuguese. And then he's earned it also in Spanish and in Latin. Yeah, and he's also taking the Italian AP tests. These, most of these are self-study, Latin, who's taking with me? So yeah, it's pretty amazing. He loves languages and is obviously talented. I also wanted to highlight, as you can see on the slide, that college credit is now offered at these schools. And this is just the most up-to-date list. It's 13 Massachusetts public institutions where they give credit to students. They get, I actually can't remember right now, full course credit, I think it's three or four, whatever regular is for the regular seal, and then they get more for distinction. And then additionally, the very last thing is that anyone who earns the seal is offered a no-cost voucher for the Massachusetts Test for Educator License Card, DESI. So that's, that's something they can just hold on to if they're interested. So that's my report on the seal. Thanks. This year was a time, was time for an update on our proficiency goals for each of our courses, six through 12. So going way back, pre-COVID, after we attended the Proficiency Academy Summer Training in 2019, we set what we thought were appropriate proficiency targets for each of our course levels. As I mentioned before, we're basically able to predict expected levels of proficiency based on hours of instruction. We've used stamp testing, that's the test that we mostly use in order to gauge proficiency every year since 2019. And we now have some reliable data to analyze to see if our hour, see if, excuse me, if our students studying at these hours then meet these expected goals. We are looking at a disparity at the, at this time between the hours in seventh and eighth grade versus the high school. And with our schedule change at the high school, we also had a slight shift there by the addition of flex block that we lost some of the hours of instruction in class time. So we're just trying to tweak our, trying to tweak our levels here in our expectations. So we are really finding more questions at this point than answers. But some of the further topics for exploration for us are, how do we continue to offer three robust language programs in a small district with a lot of competing interests and really strong departments? How do we determine in our department, when a student, a student is ready to move on to the next course? That is, where are they on their own path to proficiency, regardless of what the expected target is for that level? And how do we, as teachers, best support students to meet these proficiency standards? So in response to some of those topics of, that I just mentioned, we need to have this year adjusted our proficiency target, targets for each of our courses to be more realistic based on the hours and the students who are in our classrooms. We listed the updates in our LHS Program of Studies. We are also offering credit to repeat or advance levels of language at high school based on a student's personal proficiency level. So if someone's not ready to move to the next level yet, we're trying to offer credit for staying at the same level, continuing to work on proficiency. We're also keeping in mind that we do have a two-year high school graduation requirement for world languages and we're also working. And we're also working to ensure that colleges acknowledge the credit that we award. Um, we've hosted department sessions to develop specific writing targets for each of the high school levels. Um, so specific targets, uh, what would it look like for a student at this level if they're meeting the goal? Um, we definitely, uh, have more work to do, um, to refine our suggested targets, uh, by now reviewing student sample work against what we think it should be. Uh, we'd like to develop, um, rubrics to assess such work. Um, and we probably should, well, we should definitely be, uh, developing some targets at the middle school level, too. So to respond to all of these concerns, um, we have hosted information sessions, um, at, uh, Littleton Middle School. We had teachers from high school go to visit eighth grade classes to talk to them about language offerings and expectations of the high school. Uh, just this week, I spoke to sixth graders, um, at Littleton Middle School to highlight some of the topics in each of the languages. Um, because they're about to choose whether or not they want to study Latin or French or Spanish for seventh and eighth grade, and then maybe longer at the high school. Uh. Quite a few of us attended something called the Wayland High School's World Language Institute in January. Um, where we talked about proficiency-based feedback, and then that helped us develop some of the work that I mentioned, um, about setting targets. Um, and several department members are planning to attend once again the Massachusetts Foreign Language Association's Proficiency Academy, um, June twenty-third to twenty-fifth. Um, I was lucky enough to get a DUCY-funded spot for, um, world language leaders and Marion Price and Troy Hicks, so they would be attending as well. That is that work. Okay, here's the fun stuff, I guess. So global citizenship is a key component of the community school, of the lifelong learning domain of our world languages networks. So I have just some samplings from our classrooms, from Chris Milby, uh, there is another, um, I heard somebody mention already a March Madness bracket. Got another one, got another couple. Um, all, uh, LHS friends, students created a March Madness-style bracket for an international French language contest, uh, called Manie Musical. Uh, two juniors walked away from the tournament with perfect brackets. Um, uh, Marco Gillen shared a photo on the upper right, um, which is members of Spanish Club are reading to students at Shaker Lane. The Spanish Club has gone to Shaker Lane three times this year, they read to the kindergarten, first and second grade classes. Um, on upper left, uh, Marion Price at the high school hosted a favorite recipe exchange. Uh, staff members were invited to the tasty gallery and students, what, uh, they had been asked to cook and share their favorite recipe in Spanish class and it was held over a couple days. Um, that still got to sample some food, it was, it was really, it was fun, I went into. Um. And, uh, Marco Gillen has also hosted a connecting classrooms virtual exchange. She had students in her, in her intermediate to honors class, sharing videos as part of a virtual exchange with students in Barcelona this year. They've shared videos about who they are, the music they like, and their favorite recipes. Um, I led twenty-two students to Classics Day at BU in December to listen to professors share their expertise on technology and innovation in the classical world. Um, I have a picture of some of my students showing off some of the medals, there were way more medals than students who showed up to take a photo. Uh, but this was on the National Latin Exam, we also, uh, had students earn medals on the National Etymology Exam. And I wanted to recognize ninth grader, um, Larissa Ewan because she earned a perfect score on the National Latin Exam. Um, Amy Tatro's middle school Spanish classes participated in a letter exchange with ninth graders at Neshoba Tech. Uh, where the Neshoba Tech students wrote letters in Spanish about what life was, uh, what their daily life was like at school. So this is something we want to establish, um, from Littleton High School to our middle school, kind of as a parallel activity. Um, we also had two, um, junior classical league creative contest, uh, writing contest winners, Gabe Gustainis, uh, earned second place, and Caitlin Stimson, fourth place, both for tenth grade. Um, and then, of course, as I mentioned, we have been, um, having our host family exchange with, uh, Vialle lead of Spain. And I think that is it for me tonight, I'm happy to answer some questions, but thank you for, um, having.
I, I have, uh, uh, this is based on, my kids went to Parker and they're, at the time, um, be another small school. Mm-hmm. And they're, they had made the decision to just teach Spanish, and I'm sure, I'm sure you know the whole program, it's, it's. Has there been any research done? On the pros and cons of, of those two different philosophical approaches to teaching language in the, in the, in the probably seventh through twelfth grade? Cause I find that fascinating.
Well, the main research that's been done is that the earlier you start. And the more input that students receive in the language, in the target language, the more proficient, the higher proficiency level they can reach. So, um, we have, we spent some time a number of years ago, ten, maybe, years ago, okay? Um, talking about what goals we wanted to set for, um, Littleton, did we want to keep the three, did, you know, and it's so far so good, fingers crossed. Um, keeping the three, um, it has allowed students to have a variety of experiences. Um, I don't think there's any difference in if we offer only Spanish six through twelve and we offer three different languages six through twelve. Because most of the students, and, and honestly, we don't. We really tend, we really offer the languages seven to twelve, because six is a really an exploratory experience for kids, um, at this point. Um. The, most of the kids who enroll in a language in seventh grade, if they are interested in the language, um, and feeling successful and supported and all of that, they will stay until their senior year. So it wouldn't, it's not a change in the experience, like we offered one or three languages. Um, our staffing. And scheduling issues are pretty challenging with three languages. I would say we, we pull it off, but it's, it's, it's tricky.
Well, once upon a time. Cause I'm very old. Um. The, the Littleton, Littleton had a moment of having some Spanish in kindergarten, first grade.
Wow.
Yeah, it was exciting, it lasted a minute and a half, but that, that was a very cool minute and a half, you know, because. You know, there, there's light, there's, there's, there's sounds and the children's getting the sounds back, I mean. Six, seven, and eight, you know, five, six, seven is when they're gonna learn that. Um, I, yeah, it's, it, the political will to do that is. But, but.
The idea of the seal of bi-literacy, one of the, one of the reasons for it was to demonstrate what. Students can do when they have exposure to a language and to hopefully that show value for a language. And whether it's a heritage language or a language studied in school, um, by, by putting that seal on the diploma. So, yes, it's, that's a little bit of, that's a little bit of, you know, a tool that we have, but other than that. Barring, you know, yes, major changes to schedule, funding, all of that.
Well, there, cause there are so many other. And, and there's, there's other parts to language, it, it improves STEM, it improves, it, it improves every part of a, of a person's abilities. And I just, I haven't seen any research on that, but, so I just. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, interesting, it is.
I'll, I'll just say thank you for sharing all of the, uh, sort of extras that go along with, with the world language offerings here. And thank you for taking the time to be the individuals that have achieved, uh, the results that you folks have been able to accomplish, that's quite impressive. Appreciate that. I wish they were here for us to give.
Yeah, I'll tell them to, I'm gonna see, yeah, I'll, exactly, we embarrass them.
Um, I just want to, uh, applaud your efforts to be so student-centered, you know, it's, it's one thing to have the proficiency standards, which, you know, are the goals. You know, with the curriculum and all, but the fact that you're also tracking the individual progress and factoring that into their placement and. I think that's really, um, that's got to, got to improve the students' willingness to be in a language class because they feel like. Their individual progress is, is, uh. Is good enough, you know, it's not that they're falling behind or getting ahead. Um, I also was wondering what your pitch is to students considering taking Latin.
Oh, boy, yeah.
Versus, you know, a language that is spoken in other countries.
Um, yeah, so what I said to sixth graders is, um, that for one thing, our focus is different, um, for, so we don't have a four-hour proficiency test. We have a one-hour proficiency test because, um, the goal in Latin is reading. So we don't have to do writing, speaking, or listening to the extent that, um, the other languages do for, for testing purposes and even for instructional purposes. Um, of course, as much input as they can get is, is important and that they wanna, they wanna hear it, they wanna, of course, read it. And then, you know, say it a little bit, um, write it, we do, we focus a lot on writing. Um, but the goals are different, so it also allows us to, um, incorporate the classical world. So we can do mythology and history and culture and geography and word derivation. Um, and how the world of the Romans has influenced our modern, modern world. And look at us in a, you know, um, comparative literature's type, you know, aspect as well where we can, um, we can really compare the cultures and. Um, so there's kind of a lot that we, there's a lot we can do with it, and obviously that's why I fell in love with it, you know, archaeology and, and all of that. Um, so that's one, that's one piece is just the, the differences, um. The other piece that I say and is, and is also true is that no matter what language someone learns after they learn their first language, um. It is opening doorways, pathways for learning languages down the road. So you've opened up, you know, pathways in your brain and, and, um, interest levels. And so, um, it doesn't matter what other languages you learn, and of course, the earlier we can learn that other language, the better, as we already mentioned. But, um, it, it doesn't matter what you start with. Um, I actually was just talking to a graduate, uh, today who, um, has. Then she's twenty-three and she told me she's been to twenty-seven countries, she's a former student of mine. Um, and she has, uh, she traveled with me, she traveled with a couple other people in high school, she studied Latin, she kept studying Latin in college, she then took. Um, Italian, she is now interested, um, in possibly working for the UN someday, so she'll have to take French. But it's no problem because she already had the language, she already had the exposure to another culture, so. Um, that's just a conversation that, you know, just happened today after school, so.
Fantastic, fantastic, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your support.
Right, next up. Uh, six to twelve science curriculum coordinator, Valerie Penery.
Thank you for having me, I'm Valerie Penery. I've been the six to twelve science curriculum coordinator for the last thirteen years and I'm very proud of the accomplishments of our department. Uh, science is active, collaborative, exploratory, explanatory, constructive, communicative, relatable, and of course, exciting. Uh, these sixth grade students are analyzing fossils as they learned about French science. Um, these examples from Littleton Middle School show student explanations of scientific concepts. Modeling can take the form of images, physical models, graphs, experiments. Um, seventh grade illustrations of vocabulary words and scientific concepts aid in memory storage and retrieval, as well as helping students to make connections with experiences. The sixth grade student in the middle crocheted a cell model. Excellent. She's obviously. Uh, models can also be used to explore ideas and to extend understanding. Sixth grade students analyze the engineering design of everyday objects, in this case, it was a, oh, water bottle. Um, seventh graders explore the effects of mass and velocity using a model track and car. Slide. Uh, seventh graders are working collaboratively to construct explanations during their ecology unit. So. In Todd Schumacher's sixth to eighth grade classes, students learn and apply computer programming skills to, uh, content from other courses and to their everyday lives. At LMS, as an adult scientific community, science is collaborative. Eighth grade students up in the top left are working together at station labs to explore evidence for evolution. Uh, sixth grade students, um. On the bottom left, um, use the engineering design process to create cargo ships that meet specific criteria and constraints and evaluated different solutions. And then on the right, eighth grade students work together to design homes of the future for specific cities to counter the projected effects of climate change. At Littleton High School, we continue and extend the hands-on, minds-on approach to science started in the earlier grades. In an introductory physics class in the top left, these students learned about the effects of friction on the movement of different types of shoes. And down in the bottom left in this AP Bio lab, students created gel spheres containing algae to use as models for photosynthesis experiments. And in the bottom right, a freshman biology student is using a micro pipette and indicator solutions to identify proteins, starch, glucose, and lipids in small food samples. And then if you could play the video. There's sound.
Hold on one second, sorry.
No worries, she's gonna, she's explaining.
Uh, flexing the biceps and extending the biceps of the chicken wing. Uh, flexing the biceps and extending the biceps of the chicken wing.
So in anatomy and physiology, um, we dissected. Uh, during our muscular, our muscular and skeletal system units. Um, and chicken wings have the same muscles, bones, tendons, and ligaments as our own, so they serve as a mock. Next slide, please. Um, again, in AP Biology, uh, research groups then use those algae spheres to infer rates of photosynthesis in different conditions using pH change, color remedy. Color, color remedy, sorry. Um, and then on the right, in my environmental science class, these students use the results of their individual projects on local organisms to collaboratively construct a local food. Next slide, please. We have another video. I don't think you need to help. This is a Rube Goldberg machine that they use to investigate energy transfers. And then on the right, these are juniors and seniors in organic chemistry, which is a new class that we started last year. Um, and it's been very, um, popular, um, they separated and extracted caffeine molecules from tea. Next slide, please. Um, in this, a video is from AP Physics, a student is taking a measurement to find the centrifugal, centrifugal force of the line. These are two freshmen in a new elective course that we had this year called biomechanics. Um, they discovered the relationship between the distance from the fulcrum and the variable weights to determine a mathematical reasoning for balance of a, of a body. Um, next slide, please. Uh, a common goal for the science department is to nurture a love of science, to help students discover the joy of discovery and a thirst to explore. On the left, it's hard to see, there's two pictures there, but, um, there's some juniors and seniors in anatomy and physiology. Um, we conduct regular dissections to experience tissues and organs beyond the textbook and online diagrams. And here they're dissecting a sheep. On the right, these freshman students were able to participate in the Algae Academy, three programs supported by the Algae Foundation. And they learned about the importance and utility of algae in environment and industry and in mitigating climate change. They obviously were having fun. Um, next slide, please. Um, I also, of course, want to mention my STEM research students and the students at the middle school. So we continue to have a strong middle school STEM research program. About thirty-five students in grade six to eight participated in the After-School STEM Research Club this year. And I'm just gonna read the names, I'm not gonna read all the titles, that's okay, just to save time. Um, so we had sixteen students that presented ten projects at the Region Four Fair on April twelfth at UMass Lowell. Uh, Luke Stimson and Ryan Stimson. Sanchita Gouda and Shivani Prakatish. Uh, both in seven, Hannah Joby and Hannah Lee in seven. Alexandra Lee in seven. Uh, Vazuda Manavar, um, seven. Bebe Austin and Claire Gerbig in eight. Uh, Bennett Cahill in eight. Sasha Shamaturi and Charles Markopol, Markopol in eight. Uh, Nyla Jacob in eight. And Devangh Petty and Darsh Sharma in eight. Um, three of those projects received awards at the Region Four Middle School Science Fair, and four projects are advancing onto the State Fair on May fifth. So, um, on the left, we have Nyla Jacob in eighth grade, she won second place in chemistry. Uh, Hannah Joby and Hannah Lee, both in seventh grade, um, got third place in biological sciences. And Basuda Navaner in seventh grade got first place in behavioral science. Um, Luke and Ryan Stimson are also advancing to the state science and engineering fair, which I believe is on May twelfth. Next slide please. Uh, at the high school, um, the STEM research program has grown considerably since I brought it into the high school in twenty twenty-one. Um, from one student, my first year, we had approximately twenty-six students this year who participated in either the fall semester course or the weekly club. And for the first time, some students also presented their, uh, projects from last year at the Southern New England Junior Science and Humanity Symposium in February. Um, the students that are shown here brought their twenty twenty-five research to the Region Four High School Science and Engineering Fair back in March seventh. Big Suma Verarasa and Imaloo in tenth grade. Jackson Dusset in eleventh grade. Anika Gosukanda in ninth. Samita Gouda in tenth. Lily Graham and Gigi Malvi in tenth. Anika Jacob in eleventh. Lasia Muthiala and Caitlin Simpson in tenth. Arohan Pathik and Siddharth Patamati in eleven. Leah Pratt, Assish Sahu and Mia Tirnan in tenth. And Meida Sri in eleven. So you met some of them. They came and presented here over the past couple months. And yeah, and here they are. This is our group at the Region Four Science and Engineering Fair in March. They dressed up quite a bit. So, and so, um, at the top left, Gigi and Lily are tenth graders. They did their first ever science fair and they received third place at the regional science fair. Um, top right, Anika Jacob received a first place award. Um, Anika Gosukanda in ninth grade is presenting to a judge down in the bottom right. Um, Lasia Muthiala and Caitlin Simpson got the outstanding environmental science, um, award. And on the bottom left, uh, she's Sahu was part of a group of three that looked at the effect of climate change on biolemon and esthetic. Next slide please. Um, nine students then went on to present six projects at the state fair on April fourth. Um, Anika Jacob received a first place at Region Four and a second place award at the state fair. Um, Lily Graham and Gigi Malvi, I already mentioned, received a third place award at the Region Four Science Fair. Uh, I mentioned Lasia and Lasia Muthiala and Caitlin Simpson. Uh, received the outstanding environmental science award at the Region Four Fair. Samita Gouda, Suma Verarasa, and Imaloo, and Meida Sri all presented at the state. Next slide please. Let's see. I also should, was gonna mention that I was awarded the twenty twenty-five MCF, um, High School Science Teacher Award supported by Moderna. So I'm very humbled and grateful to be recognized and cannot wait to meet and to continue working with students in the fall. Um, I chose these images to illustrate the excitement of scientific learning. And if you can play, there is one more video. That's it. And you do need sound. So after some fun of working with, uh, the biolemon and esthetic algae in a dark storage closet. Yeah, we're finally.
Oh, whoa, I caught that on camera.
It's fun. The first, that was not the first time I saw it. The first time I saw it, they screamed and ran to the closet. And they were like, it, it glowed, it glowed. It took a long time. So they really learned some of the difficulties of working with, you know, scientific data. And things don't always work out and they did things over again. And it's just, it was, it can be a lot, but they really get a lot out of it. Uh, on the top right, Anika Jacob has conducted STEM research for the last six years, starting in seventh grade at LMS. And this year she was selected as a Marjorie Foundation Scholar in the fall and received a grant to carry out her research. Um, so this was her third year doing the science fair project at the high school. Um, bottom left, um, Lasia and Caitlin are passionate about environmental issues. And this is their second year doing a project at the high school level. I believe they also did them at the middle school level. And in the bottom middle, Lily is shown here and Gigi, they use silkworms to explore treatments for diabetes. The procedure included pricking a leg of the silkworm and testing the glucose level in the hemaline. So it was quite a, quite a project. And then on bottom right, this is Samita. She set up many, many PG dishes of planaria to learn about stem cells and tissue regeneration. These projects took weeks if not months. I'm going to share those pictures with you. Uh, thank you. May I ask her any questions?
Yeah, this is, this is so exciting. Um, I, just the overall thing that really excites me about this is that you're giving these students opportunities to be scientists. They're not just learning about science. They're being scientists and the fact that the enrollment in your, your STEM club has increased so much is just a tribute to all of the excitement that you're generating for science. And, and the other thing that I, my real takeaway throughout your presentation is your focus on exploration and explanation as through lines through all, all of these science experiences that they have. And it's, that, that's such a good, um, skill to take away from all of this. And plus it's so cross-curricular too. So I, um, you are so going above and beyond. I think what anyone would expect a science program in a district our size. So I'm really a grateful.
Team. And I do say that all the teachers are really dedicated to not just learning from books and lectures and videos, but they try to, they always try to connect it with real experiences for the kids so that they can have to think and have to gather data and figure out what it means and try to connect it to what they've learned.
And not just learn what other scientists have already discovered, but to be scientists and discover their own, their own phenomenon. So, thank you very much.
Kudos to the breadth. I mean, it sounds like no matter what a student is interested in, in the STEM world, you find a way to, to allow them to move down that, that way, which is, it's so important to keep their, their thirst for knowledge a, a, alive that way.
Thank you. I also, as an example, the organic chemistry class started because it's, we're in an organic chemistry club and they wanted a class. And so they brought it to, um, Mike Gillen, who brought it to the administration and said, sure, let's do it. So, and not many high schools have organic chemistry. So it's, it's a great course for kids who are interested in learning to simple.
So, uh, please share our appreciation with your team and Kristen and Liz as well. Wonderful job tonight. The pictures are so wonderful. You're bringing, you're bringing science to life in the classroom. And, uh, the expression on everyone's face just tells that you guys are knocking out of the park. So, yeah, well done.
Yeah.
By day, I'm just so impressed with all of the presentations from the curriculum coordinators. You, you look at the breadth of course offerings and, you know, engagement, engagement, agency in our, in our classrooms. We, we offer so many opportunities for our students to, to find something that they're passionate about and interested in. The consistency in, in terms of vertical and horizontal alignment, uh, although it may not be evident to some of us in the room tonight. It is there. And this, this helps build everything together. I've been in a number of districts in my career and I've had a variety of experiences. My job as superintendent is to move districts forward. And I, I have to tell you that Littleton Public Schools and its staff do incredible jobs. Um, when I'm in classrooms, I'm blown away by, by what happens and, and how interested our students are. And our teachers are, have a magical way of creating excitement in their classrooms. And, and, uh, just like to commend all of you and, and all of our staff for doing that. Uh, I mean, the breadth of courses in, in history is, is just incredible. History is so, so important. It's always been important, but I think it's more important now. Uh, I've always, uh, had an interest in language acquisition. And I've had districts, uh, under my leadership, uh, had foreign language in, in kindergarten right through grade twelve. In fact, my own children were a product of the system and I was superintendent for most of the time. Uh, and I look at the fluency levels of our students in our high school. And I can say with confidence that what our teachers do is evident to me that, that it has no bearing on when they start to learn a second language. Our students are so fluent. I'm just fascinated by this. I have a granddaughter who is a French immersion. And, uh, she started in pre-K and she's in grade four. Parents are semi-bilingual, not fully bilingual. So I, I was a little nervous about that as a grandfather. I have to remember I'm a grandfather and not a father, which is true in cars. And, uh, as my granddaughter progressed, uh, through the first four grades, she's in grade four now. I really had concerns at first because her full day was in French. And as she was learning French, her, her, her language acquisition in English, it didn't lag behind. But the enunciation, pronunciation of words, there, there was a, there was a divergence and, and an accent that was developing. And I just sat back and watched intrigued. By third grade, it was completely gone. And when she toggles back and forth from one language to another, the accents completely change. It's just fascinating how, how our children have this ability cognitively to, to morph into different languages. And, uh, when I look at what our students do here in high school, by the time they're in high school, it's just, it's just incredible. So. You know, thank you, uh, for, for everything that you do. And we're just so fortunate to, to have you as part of our industry.
And are they learning, um, Brazilian Portuguese or Portuguese Portuguese?
I. So, uh, well, as a heritage student, um, I believe Brazilian Portuguese. Um, I don't know that there's, I think the test is just one. Just we look at a.
It's not, it's not vital. I just, at one point I was in the middle of it. How different it is. And it's, it's just that don't, never say it's just the same around someone who's Brazilian.
Yeah, no, I'm just not sure that the test is labeled as one, so, or the others.
I'll look it up then.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Um, because, you know, I mean, there's, there's a, a large, there are different, um, cultures coming into our, our towns, you know.
What's like Latin American Spanish versus, versus.
We're Spanish, Spanish, yeah.
Right, but there are, but the test, that, that test in particular, like the Spanish test just includes all of it. Yeah, so it might be the same for the test.
Yeah.
If it might include different dialects and regional differences.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah, it is interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
None of that because I think. Kelly, I assume that, uh, do you speak Quebecois as opposed to French?
Not very well anymore, uh, on my bucket list to go live in Montreal for six months. On a French speaking community.
Yeah.
And, uh, reverse myself. My wife is way more than.
It's very fun to have children learning and be able to speak with them.
And it's, it's important to be exposed to second language.
It improves everything. And, and all the studies just show that it's just improves everything.
All right, next up, we've got our second presentation, which is the superintendent's evaluation. So the school committee and Elaine Zentman will discuss the results of the superintendent's evaluation. Elaine is our presenter. The evaluation was performed by all, uh, school committee members. Elaine was so kind enough to share this, to really appreciate and she did a wonderful job, uh, putting this together. She will, uh, walk us all through, uh, the results of the evaluation.
Okay, thank you. Um, so this was, I, I want to start off by expressing my gratitude to both Kelly and other members of the school committee that this was a, a new process for everybody. Um, this was very different from what was done the last go-round, which was a more, uh, broad overview of all of the things that, that Kelly does. And then I think the school committee provides more of a narrative and response. Um, so. One of my goals was to create a more targeted approach that, where we could provide more specific and concrete feedback. Um, so I think it felt a little, it a little weird to everybody to, you know, there's so many things that we want to talk about, so many things that we want to say. But we really were focused on, you know, four standards and six goals. And we were trying to limit our conversation to that. But that being said, I think we all found ways to insert things that we really care about into the conversation as well. So I, I, I hope that the process felt, uh, authentic to everybody and like a way that you felt you could provide specific feedback that was actionable and helpful. Um, so thank you for, everybody for being willing to make that shift. Um, so I thought what I would do is just, um, look at, at the four standards and the six goals and really talk about a few bullet points and some commendations and some recommendations that, you know, this, the summit evaluation was already shared with Kelly. So he got that yesterday morning. Um, so he's had a chance to look through it. So this is, this is just hitting the highlights. I'm not going to go into all of that writing, all of it again, you've already seen. So, um, the way this works, there's four standards and, um, Kelly was asked to pick one element from each of the four standards to really be a focus that he would provide evidence for. Um, so I'll talk about each of those. So the first standard is of, about, um, instruction. And Kelly chose meeting diverse needs for the element that he wanted to provide evidence. Um, so I just want to read from the rubric what proficient is for that particular element. So it's while observing principal practices, practice and artifacts regularly provides feedback to ensure that principals are identifying and promoting appropriate inclusive teaching practices that meet the diverse learning needs of all students. So this is really about how do we, um, meet the needs of all the students in our very diverse population. Um, some of us took the, took the opportunity to talk about diversity, which is also very important, and how much we value the efforts with DEIB. So that, we sort of used that opportunity to, um, explain how important that is to us. But this particular standard is really about diverse learning styles and diverse learning needs. Um, so the commendations that, that we offered for that particular element were that, um, there's been a lot of really effective professional development on universal design for learning, UDL. Um, there's been a commitment to frequent meetings with leadership to discuss implementation strategies for UDL and for multi-tiered systems of support. Um, I think it's great that, that the leadership team and the central office team meet so frequently. I think that's, that's something, um, I haven't seen in other districts that, that you meet that frequently. And I think that's so important for, um, coherence across the district. So that's awesome. Um, some recommendations for meeting diverse needs. Um, we would love to see an action plan going forward for how to take UDL from theory to practice. You know, knowing that the teachers have received a lot of professional development on this. Um, we continue to hear a lot, when teachers and coordinators report out on UDL, they often talk about choice boards, um, which is sort of a entry-level approach to UDL. So I think going forward as a recommendation, it would be great to have an action plan for how we're gonna use UDL more as a tool, um, to support diverse learners, which is the objective, of course. Um, one way to figure that out is to do some focused learning walks um, with, look for specific to UDL strategies or MTSS. And, um, gather some data about how UDL is being implemented. And then debrief those learning walks to determine an action plan for some next steps. So that would be, um, some ideas for going forward for meeting diverse needs of learners. Um, I think I'm gonna stop after every standard, so I'm not just talking, talking, talking so that, um, other folks can do again, or Kelly, if you want, have some thoughts about that one standard. If you'd like to, any, any point, you can interrupt me. Okay, that being said, so standard two, the element that Kelly chose was fiscal systems. And we were all in agreement how, uh, thrilled we are with the way the budget has been managed in this district. That it's created in alignment with goals. Um, the fiscal reporting is detailed and transparent. Um, it's created through a collaborative, collaborative approach um, that creates good relations between the other boards and the school committee. We appreciate the long-term strategy of creating in-district programming for students with disabilities because that's resulted in a reduction in the cost of sending students out to out-of-district programs. So I know that's been a long-term plan, but it's really, um, we can see the impact now that, um, it's good for students and it's good for the budget. Um, it's good for students and it's good for the budget. Um, and we also really appreciate that we've got a healthy school choice fund. Which adds to the stability of our finances and it also levels our class sizes. So. All of those are commendations. Um, we really felt that that was an exemplary um, standard. Um, especially in light of knowing that so many other districts are really struggling right now with their budgets and. The fact that we are in such a comfortable place is really um, to your effort. So we are very grateful for that. Um. A couple of recommendations um, are that we plan for upcoming develop, development projects in town that. Will lead to increased enrollment. So I know that's on your radar. Um, and also I think we need to plan for changes at the federal level. So then have that sort of plan be in the back of our minds. It's already on mine. Um, so that was standard two.
So if I can, I, I missed the uh, transfer from standard one.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was, I, I should have maybe interjected before, but the, you know, the meeting diverse needs uh. Element is so important to any district. And we need to continue to implement strategies that, that really make the learning needs of all students. In order to do that, we need to. Provide students with different ways of learning. You know, UDL is, is, is a game changer. We are, although we've been working this, on this for a few years. We are at that, that point in time where we need to enter new phases. And I think that. The learning walk suggestion, something I've been trained in and have trained the administrators in, it's something that's uh. There's a good suggestion. There's a, we need to really sit back, take stock of where we are. Identify our strengths, identify our challenges, and then come up with strategies to level the playing field in all of the classes that are students. It's evident when you're in education, that when you implement strategies like this, the. Opportunity to see change happens uh, more quickly in time. Then we get into middle school, it, it slows down a bit. When we get into high school, it's, it's a larger challenge. And part of the challenge is. Of course, content of high school is incredible. If you haven't taught high school, right, I'm telling you, I taught high school for ten years. And the demands on the teacher to cover content, cover complex thinking skills. At times can be an impediment to experimenting with alternate strategies. I think we're at that cusp now. I think our high school has done a good job, but now we have to, we, we have to think of that, that next stage of implementation. That is going to take us to the next level that we feel is. So I do appreciate that situation, or, or sorry, recommendation. I, I don't think that we can ever, ever not emphasize meeting diverse needs because our population is becoming more diverse. And it's imperative that that, that stays on our radar at all times. No matter what element, simply to, to choose this to report on, it needs to be a priority at all times. In terms of the fiscal component, I mean, I've been fortunate to work with school committees in the last fourteen and a half years that, that have. Valued my expertise in budgeting and have given me the, the opportunity. To uh, shape things and vision forward and, and they've had trust in me to do so. And having that. That understanding, that teamwork and dialogue has allowed us to, to make some real good choices for the future. And you know, I would say right now we're probably, all districts in Massachusetts, we're probably in the top two percent. Maybe we're better, I don't know, but, but the hard work is paid off. But the caution I have is, is the landscape is, is changing at all times. And we need to make sure that we don't become too comfortable with what we have. I mean, we have a healthy school choice fund, but we can't be too reliant on that fund. I mean, when you look at school choice from a, a budgetary point of view, should be one-time costs. We're, we're at that, at a point of, of uh, healthiness that we can afford to have recurring costs for a while. But what we have to do, just like we did with uh, full-day kindergarten and changing our transportation system. As we re-injected the money into the budget over a period of time. And that's why, one of the reasons why we've been so successful. So I just wanted to point that out because as we move forward, we, we've made a commitment to fund capital projects for the next couple of years. And that's gonna make a huge difference in the taxpayer. When the Shiger Lane School begins construction, we have reported the vote in, in October to determine what our destiny is and. But we, we cannot, and everybody knows this, but I think it's worth repeating because we cannot continue to do that forever. This is a temporary measure to move our, our district forward, acquire a, a school that is, is, is needed. And, and then relook at how we're going to continue to budget as a town, not only as a school department. And Elaine, you, you pointed something out really important. Even though we're the biggest budget in the town, and that's true in any town. We, we, we have to be working together. We're interdependent. We're not working with silos. I mean, they think. That happens in a lot of communities and we've made a concerted effort to make sure that, that we maintain a partnership. And when you're talking about money, stressful, strange relationships at times. But the school committee, you know, the, what, the school committee today and in the past have always valued relationships. And that's one of the reasons why we're, we're here where we are today.
Can I interject here that um, I would love to see more discussion and um. Regarding how things are going throughout the district where. It's possible we, we, we should funnel some money in. I, um, I feel like. We were rightfully really focused on school, on, on becoming more transparent. Working with our others, uh, our other town boards and I, I applaud that focus. But there have been other discussions around. Are we able to keep this, this kind of um, school aid because they're, are, are they getting. Are they getting um, hired away by Concord and Carlin? I mean, we're surrounded by very, very wealthy towns. So we have that challenge and let's not turn away from it. You know, maybe it's a challenge we can't meet right now or even next year, but let's keep an eye on some of the challenges. And, and, and keep the conversation going so that when we have the opportunity. We can be sure that we've, we've aimed our, aimed our money where it's, where, where it is needed and we haven't, we haven't just. Been so concerned with making sure that the town thinks of us well, that we have let something go in the schools. And, and you know, I don't, I don't, I know that's not, you know, it's never, never on purpose. And like I, like I was pointing out, we have had a lot of things. That have been very demanding. But you know, I, I do wanna just like raise that up and say like, let's going forward and be sure that we, we keep those things in mind. Does that make sense?
It does. And, and I appreciate that. It's, it's interesting when you, you bring up other towns that, that. May have a higher cost of like, cost, and a lot of experience in that in my career and, and I can say with confidence. And in terms of staffing, that has not affected us much. In fact, we draw staff serious because of our reputation. Because they can come to a school with a smaller class size and make a bigger difference. And they're well-supported. So we're, we're doing okay with that in terms of programming. We're always looking. At what our competition, and it is competition. You use a million words. Bottom line is we compete for students. We should. That makes us better. It makes every school district better. So we're always looking, looking for other ways of doing business. I'm glad you bring it up. Is that super important? You, you continue to be successful because you're continuing to improve. You never reach a, a point where you've been. A total camp. So I, I do appreciate.
So to um, I just wanted to bring it back to the rubric. Um, so. To, to earn proficient rating, it's a very rigorous standard. It's difficult to get. Um, you have to be performing at a very high level to earn proficient. Exemplary is even above that. It's very rare. Um, to earn an exemplary rating and um, but we did feel that Kelly earned an exemplary rating for fiscal systems. And I just wanted to read what that is from the rubric so you can see exactly how, how high the standard is and, and how Kelly met it. So. Here's the wording from the rubric. Leads the administrator team to develop a budget aligned with the district's vision, mission and goals. That addresses the needs of all students and effectively communicates budget rationale to staff, community members and other stakeholder groups. Allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district slash school level goals. Uses budget limitations to create new opportunities for improvement when possible. And seeks alternative funding sources as needed. Models this practice for others. I totally think you could model your process for other superintendents. It's um, it's that good. So thank you for, for the expertise that you bring. In that area. Um, so standard three is about culturally proficient communication. Um, so let me read that standard to kind of focus us on, on this topic. So the proficient rating is sets clear expectations and supports administrators. To provide regular two-way culturally proficient communications with families about student learning and performance. District-wide communications to families are provided in multiple formats. And reflect understanding of and respect for different families, home languages, culture and values. So from the evidence that Kelly provided, um, we really wanna commend you on. That using the, the new communications platforms tool now, like the, the way that you surveyed the stakeholders and selected that tool. Um, the way you rolled it out and it's really improved the ability on the community to collect, connect with the community. So. Thank you for that. Um, you pointed out that communications are translated into multiple, multiple languages, which is so important. Um, communications available digitally and on paper. Um, and also I wanted to point out that you are very personally accessible. You're in the schools a lot. Um, you know, that's, I don't wanna, I wanna, I don't wanna overlook how important that is because that's not the case with all superintendents. Like we really do appreciate that your invisible presence in the schools. That's so good for teachers to see. It's good for principals to see. It's good for the students to know you. So I, I feel like that's a piece of, of your two-way communications. Um, so our recommendations, again, like I said earlier, we, you know, the fact that this is culturally proficient, we couldn't resist. Pulling a little DEIB in here too, because you know that's important to all of us. Um, so we would like to continue to value DEIB. And um, community outreach efforts like the Culture Night at, at Shiger Lane. I think that involved Russell Street too, right? It was just the active Shiger Lane building. Um, we'd like to, oh, improve the consistency of the information provided in the weekly newsletters. I know that they all go out once a week, but some schools provide much more information than others. So it would be good to um, smooth that out a bit and make sure that, that all schools are sharing. A, a good amount of information. Um, and also this particular standard talks about two-way communication, which is what makes the standard so tricky. Because how do you do two-way to communication? Um, so. I, I, one thought that comes to mind is i- i- if maybe there's a tool on these newsletters. Or comments to come back from the community, um, some kind of forum where families can reach out with. Um, feedback on what they read without violating that whole thing that, you know, it, this can't be about individual students. If you have a concern about your student, you can go to the teacher. Um, so just something to explore, like, you know, if we're sending all this information out, how can we create opportunities for families to give us information as well? Um, so I will stop there. That's the end of that standard. So if anybody has anything to add, any thoughts? Trying to summarize what we had all interviewed, so.
Um, since we have the new librarian slash media slash whatever we're going to call them. Maybe, maybe something like that will, will, will arise as, as their expertise.
Yes.
Um, and then the fourth standard is.
Since you had asked me to. I, you know, I, I agree that two-way communication, because we're, we're communicating with a large population is, is tricky. It always has. And through my own experience, the, the best way to communicate. Two-way communication is to get to know people where you're not using a keyboard. Try to get to know them. And I've used that concept, since I was a teacher and a principal and the number of superintendencies I've had in my career. And it's always something that's always in my mind, like how can you, how can you establish effective two-way communication? Through emails. It, 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 it's not a problem to me. I mean, some of you have taken online courses before and uh. I always find it intriguing when you're, you're working with a group of students. And in my case, some of my courses that I, I've taken have been with students from the world. So there are cultural differences. But it's amazing that when you're communicating with these people, you develop, you. Just develop their personality in terms of who are they? You all of a sudden have never met them in person. You had video called them. But by analyzing their writing, you somehow think you have a great idea of who they are as a person. I've always been fascinated by that. But stick to the topic. And I think it's something that we can always try to get better at. Uh, newsletter comment section, we had to be careful because as soon as you offer something, you have to be responsible. And do, do we have staff to be responsible? There are only so many hours that our principals can, can work. But it's something we could, we could try with on a, on a smaller level, just one area of the newsletter, for example. So something I wanna give more thought to. So I do appreciate the comments in this area. And so, you know, communication is, is so important. But you, you can't, you can't replace. The ability or the opportunity to get to know people like face-to-face.
Which is why it's so great that you're in the building so much, so.
I mean, virtual, maybe it's not the same.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Um, so the fourth standard is on continuous learning of the administrator. Um, so the rubric reads uses relevant data, research and best practices, regularly reflects on and improves leadership practice. Sets meaningful goals and develops new approaches to improve the efficiency and practices of the district. Um, so our commendations on the evidence that you provided are that um, you're an instructional leader. Who models the importance of continuous learning. And, and again, that's not a given with all superintendents, that they present themselves as instructional leaders. You know, some, some present themselves as like budget people or as ADR people or. So we're fortunate that you present yourself, well, a, a budget person for sure, but also as an instructional leader and that. Um, educators in the district see you that way. Um, you share. Your new professional learning at frequent leadership meetings and central office meetings. Um, noting the book club that, that you started um, with others on the leadership team. That's a great way to share your professional learning. Um, recommendations for um, the coming years is to. Um, work with stakeholders, a, a team of folks in the district to define a district-wide vision to anchor the professional learning. Um, which could also um, build a community. Um. Build upon the portrait of a learner initiative, which I think has been so fantastic in. You know, I, I love the way that you've talked with, with teachers and administrators and, uh, you know, really. Building this consensus about what a learner looks like in Littleton Public Schools. I think that's, that's such a fantastic initiative. And would love to build upon that to engage all students, staff and families. In um, getting on the same page with professional learning. Um, and then develop a PD plan that has metrics to get a. Measure its effectiveness. So I, I, I love the, I, I think that menu approach with. The professional learning for teachers has been really popular. I feel like everybody's getting a little bit of what they need. But the piece that we're missing is a district-wide focus so that we're all rowing in the same direction toward a common goal. Which then can be measured um, to see what the impact is on the district. Um, so those are just some thoughts. Um, for going forward with continuous learning. So before I keep going, I'm gonna pause. Let other people speak. Especially Kelly, if you wish.
Other school committee members first.
Yeah.
If, if you so choose.
Nothing on that topic. I have like a couple of closing remarks that I'd like to share, but.
Yeah.
I. I hear you and, and I do think that's, that's important. I do think that's that's important. We are, we've been working towards that for years. We. We. Most likely need to solidify. Uncreed fashion. That's something we need to think about. We have tons of information that I didn't provide you. If you have too much information, it defeats the purpose of. Having you look at what I've given you. I don't want to vouch for you. So. That's something that we are thinking about and and uh we do have robust discussions with our. Our curriculum team beyond our curriculum coordinators in terms of professional development, all staff have been. Into our professional development by a. We beefed up our our summer opportunities for teachers as well. I'm always fascinated. With our staff because uh I sign all the forums that come through for professional. And you know, the number of staff that take courses, number of staff that uh participate in seminars and has has really. It's not only comforting to me, it's admirable. I mean, we we are a district that values way forward. And that doesn't always happen, to be honest with you. That's a culture that we've created. And and we need to continue to solicit input. From the people that were offering professional development to. To make sure it was meaningful. There's a balance because we have district commissioners that. We need to implement to forward student learning. So it's a balance between between both. Both ends of perspective, but they're both equally.
So those were the four rubric standards, you know, so we were measuring your evidence against the rubric. There's also six goals. That we had a rubric um to determine, well, it wasn't even really a rubric. It was determining. You know, if if the goal was met or if the goal was succeeded. So um your professional practice goal was completion of recertification requirements. So. That goal was met because you indeed were recertified. Your student learning goal was. To conduct research and write an article that focuses on the benefits and challenges of using. Character strong as an S E L curriculum at Littleton High School. So some of the feedback we provided on that was was how. Impressive it was that. Feedback was gathered from year one and then used to modify the curriculum to better fit the needs. Of a small suburban district like us. And that the feedback that you got from teachers after those modifications were made was. Was really much higher. That this the teachers really thought it was having a a better impact on their students. So. I thought that whole process was really impressive, you know, about the the process of selecting the curriculum. Trying it out, getting the feedback and then reacting to that feedback to make changes. And then you measured improvement like. I I thought that was a great goal because it's so measurable. And then when you have that a way to measure it, it gives you a way to reflect on it. So I would. I think, you know, if you're ever thinking of presenting like at Mass Mask or something, that would be, I think, a great topic that other districts could. Benefit from hearing about.
Appreciate it. We are, we are thinking about doing something.
Yeah.
So thank you for that.
Yeah, I was really happy to read about that. The district improvement goal, um you provided leadership support and oversight for the continued implementation of Intu Math. So that was again, active instructional leadership. You were learning what the teachers were learning, which is so great for them to see you shoulder to shoulder with them in that initiative. Your district improvement goal two was providing leadership support and guidance for the Shaker Lane Building Committee. Stacy, you'll agree with me that his his leadership there has been. So impactful, great having such a strong champion. For that initiative. At you know, which shows up in meetings with the M S B A, the Slant Board, Pincom, the Architects, you know, it's. We really are grateful for your. Yes, Stacy, this is an opportunity for you to listen to your sound. Kelly has been. Wonderful in that.
And and Stacy, you've been instrumental as well. The feedback you provided during those meetings has helped that shape the direction. Thank you for that.
Your third goal was provide leadership support and oversight for implementing the updated districts, which was strategic plan. I think it's been great that we've had a focus on the strategic plan at every school committee meeting because it's really helped. Elevate the standards from the strategic plan so we can. Keep it top of mind. And you've also negotiated the successor contracts with the E S Ps and the A As. And aligning expectations for educator evaluation is. I think a a really great accomplishment from that process. So some recommendations for the whole. Goal-setting. Process. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna be starting this all over again, of course, like that this was the end of two-year cycle. So now the whole cycle starts again this summer. So I would like to brainstorm district priorities at the summer retreat. To. Give you some ideas for determining your goals. I'd love to make the goals like to include a measurable component. So because that really, it's hard to reflect on the success of a goal if there's no way to measure it. So I want to make sure we built that into the wording of the goals. And I don't know if you've um. So Desi has come out with a new smart goal protocol, the Smart Eagles. Which sounds like. But so it's.
I'll get used to the name.
Yeah, no, I like it though. I mean, I hate long acronyms, but that's Desi's specialty. They love acronyms. But it's, so it's strategic, measurable, action-oriented, rigorous. Kind, also inclusive. And equitable. That's what the smartie is. So it's. Not a easy thing to come up with a goal that's a smarty goal, but. I think we've all found over ten, like, the better your goal is, the easier it is to evaluate it at the end. So it's worth putting the time into coming up with like really solidly worded goals. So. And I'd love to continue. Having our our school committee meetings aligned with the the um strategic plan. Standards, because I think that's been really helpful to focus our meetings. So any thoughts, Kelly, on that? And then then we can open it up to everybody for closing remarks.
I really enjoyed the process uh that we used this time. It was it was um. For me as a superintendent, it allowed me to. To focus on fewer areas rather than inundating you with forty pages of reading. Love to write, but same time you have to be the recipient. I think it's a lot to expect. So channel it in into. Your uh elements and. And also I need fewer goals. I think that's one thing I learned from this process and. I have way more than six goals. Forget the six. I have probably forty to fifty. But there are ones that that are worthy of maybe focusing on or with the scope. And and so I'm 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 sold on this process. I mean, it's like. It's always a a mystery for for a superintendent um. Working with the school committee to find out that sweet spot because you you wanna. Show you what I'm doing and somewhat that's an impossible task. I can show you some of what I'm doing. But that has to be important to you. So I think we made some great strides in terms of revising. Hope it was was easier to follow. Tied into what we're doing and tied into the purpose of of why we're all here every two weeks as well. Thank you for that.
Uh I'll just say I'd like to congratulate you on a great year. I really have enjoyed our working relationship this year. I don't have to share specific examples because we've had many conversations, but change is. Is difficult, I I believe, like, I think you're. I don't want to say you weren't getting your spread before, but. We're fortunate to have you and I really think all systems are clicking at this point in time. I believe you've um or I know that you've built. A wonderful um administrative team. Within Littleton. I think that there's. Great professionalism uh shared across the departments. I think you're uh a leader who. Digs is not afraid to dig in when um you need to make your point. Or hold ground on a particular issue and you're able to do that. In a way that's not off-putting. Um number of examples over the years where you've uh evidenced that to me, which I. Extremely appreciate. It's impossible. You made the point. It's impossible for us to know everything that you do, but when I get an opportunity to witness some of the things that are taking place. I'm always impressed. Shaker Lane Building uh follows building meetings, building committee meetings that um. I was able, I mean, your level of involvement in that is exemplary. It's above and beyond. What your role is as a superintendent and you've got this on top of it. It's like you mentioned it before, like, we don't want to rest on our laurels. Um so. Where we are as a district is exciting. And it can either get tiring or it can become more exciting. And it's um. We we're all hoping that uh you'll, you know, maintain a philosophy that we're gonna, that everyone's gonna come to work. And level, continue to level up because that's when it gets exciting versus look at the job we've done. And uh oh, we have to do this all over again, right? Like, you know, the school year rolls around and here we go again. No, it's what what positive impacts can we bring? This school year uh to continue to improve the educational experience for our students. So I. I just want to say, I think you've done an absolutely fantastic job. I think that your relationship with the school committee and the. I don't want to see, the tone is the wrong word, but we sort of govern you at the appropriate level. We're, we don't bog you down and that's by design and because of our trust and the work that you do. So. And we're here to do three things. Galloway was one of them. And uh not getting in your way is uh is part of that. So um. Job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. And you do a very good job. Thank you for that.
I mean, some of these other districts, I might have phrased it differently, but. The longer you sit on the school committee, the the more you hear about what's happening in some of these other towns and their level of involvement and getting in the weeds. And it 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 doesn't allow you to maintain that ten thousand foot view of the district. And continue to move us forward. Because if you're putting on fires every day, we're bringing you fires, that's. We have nowhere to go. True. So um again, fabulous job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This was my first year on a school, any school committee ever. And I just, I just want to express. Gratitude for. You being willing to have conversations back and forth and help me understand. What my role is in regard. I think I, you know, I didn't know. I I took the course, but I didn't really, hadn't lived. You know, like what I needed to be doing on the school committee. And I appreciate the leadership Justin, you and Kelly. Have given me over this year. Um so that I feel like I'm starting to understand what I should be doing. But and and I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Oh yeah, we need to have a motion to accept the.
Evaluation.
I so I I move that the school committee accepts the um evaluation of superintendent. Clutchy. Yeah, as presented.
As presented.
Which can advance a name. Second, if I Stacy, I'll listen, uh I'll listen in favor to keep saying aye.
Aye.
Passage unanimously. Travel down the lane. Again, thank you very much, Kelly, for a wonderful year.
Well, thank you.
To be proud of your accomplishments.
And I I just want to to thank the school committee. I've had a. I don't know how many hundreds of school committee members in my career. I much prefer a school committee of five. I've had a school committee of seventeen before. And it was actually more than that. It was during the regionalization process. That was the final product seventeen, so. Multiply that by at least five, so. And one thing I I really, I really appreciate about. You as a as a group and in the groups I've had and asked him. But there's been kind of change in in who's running for school. And it's been refreshing for me to have parents of children in the school, on the school. Balanced with. School committee members that have had children go through the school. That that's such an incredible wealth of knowledge. For me to 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 use and help me lead within a district. I would say more often than not, my school committees have been made up of. Of people that have had children in school. And it it's tough for for young families to devote time to public service. And I know how much you've sacrificed. And I truly appreciate that. I wanted you to to. To really understand how valuable that is, not only to me, but to our educators, our leaders. And our community. Because you're you're living. With your own children. Every day, what we're doing in our district. And then I have that experience of. What was learned when when our members that have had children go through the district. It was just an incredible knowledge base. For me to pull from, and it helps me make the right decisions. To continue to move the district forward. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. So that uh motion has passed. Uh we have a third presentation, but this sounds like an appropriate time to recognize Stacy since our last. This is uh Stacy's last meeting. Thank you for being able to join us this evening. I know you had a uh conflict, so we're happy to see you. Um I just want to say it's been a pleasure. Serving with you. I think the uh you have served on a number of subcommittees. Uh which you've been very active in. I always appreciated um your role on those committees, but. The the Shaker Lane one, I mean, you've really got to do this this year. Above and beyond in terms of your ability to serve on that committee and keep us informed to be the voice of the school committee. I just, I really want to thank you for that. You've always been voice of reason at these meetings. And you haven't, um that's Kelly was just saying, it's important. That a couple of us have some children in the school system. So you've been able to share personal observations. Um and I appreciate that. And I think it makes a big difference. So your contributions have been incredibly valuable and we're going to miss you. And I want to allow my other school committee members to say, that sounds good, or you can.
I I I want to acknowledge how your your voice has brought me back into this whole child. So often, um I I can get very nerdy and down. Let's say down a little rabbit holes and you have this vision. Of of a healthy, whole school district and the help to that supports all the children. And I just, I just really appreciated that all you.
Yeah, the when I've really seen you shine is in these tours at Shaker Lane when. People's concerns were elevated and. People started getting worried and had a lot of questions. And you always had the most. The calming presence using. Logic somehow, like if you you're always able to very articulately. Provide, maybe not all the answers, but enough so that people have faith that. Their viewpoint was being considered and um that. There there are people working on all of these big questions that. That people should have some confidence in. So I, you know, you. I I just remember several several times when you stood up and just said the perfect thing that kind of. Took the temperature down in the room and um we're really going to miss that. So, yeah, so thank you for.
Stacy, you you're leaving the community committee. And you should feel really good about the fact that you have made a tremendous step, helping the Shaker District. Your your input has been so valuable and and your perspective on things. Many times, I love some of your sayings. Uh you come up with such cool sayings that that may be four words, but they're still being. I understand completely that it's. Life has a lot of twists and turns and. I'm a young family. I feel I feel personally so fortunate that you put the time to jump on the school two years, put all that you have to. Forever appreciate that. And please don't be a stranger. You're part of the team. Doesn't mean you have to be sitting at the table, but when you leave the scope committee, it does mean that um. And please don't be a stranger. You're part of the team. Doesn't mean you have to be sitting at the table, but when you leave the school committee, it does mean that you no longer have a relationship with us. Sure. So thank you for
Two-way communication.
You could be an interested citizen anytime.
Anytime. Call in at any time.
Listen, guys, you got to think of it this way. We're on.
So we have a, we have a plaque to recognize your efforts and would be my taking.
Yes, we should take it.
Something on a mantle now. Yes.
Yeah, right? Do you know?
Yeah, I'll get it. Telegraphing.
Are you a doctor?
Yep.
Yep.
I'm commuting the school committee.
Can we do it over here so we don't make the screen? Just so we don't make the screen in the background.
Uh, let's get Stacy in the middle just to make sure this still looks good.
All right, here we go. One, two, three, one more and one more. Awesome. All right.
Now, this has been a phenomenal experience. Maybe that just can be, it can be. I'm so grateful. We understand that. I'm gonna find a little bit more time in my life, but this is a great experience. And you have been an amazing mentor in helping me understand all of the seeds of our school system and the district and all of the things that we have to think about that us parents don't always realize or know, right? There's a lot of layers to it. And you do a phenomenal job of just explaining in a very comfortable way that helps, has always helped me understand.
I mean, so much.
Yeah, and your insights and inputs in the safety and security meeting, your insights and inputs into the safety and security meetings as well has been very helpful and yep.
I'll miss you guys, but
It really, it's great when your kids are grown too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, we have our our third and final presentation, which is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five district slide presentation. I think, you know, it's eight fifty-three. I think we're going to be out here in the next ten fifteen minutes to to get through the rest of the agenda. So without any further ado, uh, let's roll with the slideshow unless you have an intro. If you want to talk, Kelly.
I always look like I want to talk. I'm working on it. What, what, sorry. But we we do every year. I mean, everything is purposeful and I think it's so important that we celebrate. And we celebrate by showcasing our students at the school. So I've been doing culminating videos for over thirty-five years and it was a press launch. So I hope you enjoy it. It just gives you a snapshot and as I've always said, pictures say a thousand words. I hope you you take more away from the video than you see in the video. It does speak volumes to to our children, all our children at school. All right.
Hopefully.
So it works.
Hopefully the sound works.
I'd like to give Julie Lowery credit for this. She's been doing it for years. It involves students also and you know, it's nice to see the final product. We still have a lot of pictures and and throughout the year and it's nice to to pull from that and and create a production that kind of shows what we are what our students are doing in our schools. Does, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Job well done. Thank you. All right, is there a second opportunity for interested citizens? Speaker? Hearing none, close that up. And we'll roll over to our subcommittee reports. I don't know that we have much report this evening, but we'll start with P M B C. Face, last chance.
P M B C. In school, I mean, that's Shaker Lane. In a very interesting meeting yesterday.
Yes, we did.
I never, although there's that much to know about A track.
Did you make a decision?
We we did after much deliberation.
Yes, lots of it.
We decided to direct the architects to explore option three, which is a heat pump system in ground. Drilling drilling wells that are about a hundred and fifty deep. And when we kept probing for more information, it became evident to us that we just needed to get something into MSBA. In reality, we have some time and actually until the fall to decide whether we want to go back to option two or not. So it's not going to affect the schematic design as much as we we once thought it was. I mean, the inner workings at the school are still going to be the same. It's just that we're not pulling from the air. We're pulling from the ground. So it's the outside configuration. Right?
Did you decide the increased investment is is worth what you get out of it?
We 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 definitely do and there are operational cost savings as well. And there is a grant that's still available. We we didn't get an update on that grant. No. Again, I want to be cautious when I say that because grants come and go, but there seems to be a commitment and it's not a but tactfully, it's not a, it's not a commitment that can go anywhere. This this commitment is written into statutes. So I think we're pretty good for a couple of years, but we wouldn't be eligible for the grant, the actual money until the very end of the project. So it's something that we would have to pay upfront. And then if approved, once the project was completely done, we can reimburse for a couple million dollars, which is significant. So I'm really excited about the decision. I'm glad we took our time making it because we were somehow converging on on option two. And and because we didn't have all the information for option three. We didn't know about the grant. When the grant was put on the table, that allowed us to really have a good conversation. So kudos for the, you know, the only committee to take that time to to adopt the plan and and we will be doing a presentation before the town meeting in cafeteria. And we're excited about that. We have thirteen slides, no more, just thirteen. And we're going to have plenty of time for a question and answer session.
That starts at six.
Six o'clock to six fifty.
For all those that are listening, if you don't want to attend the meeting anyway.
Go to sit, go to panel early.
Get there at six, listen to the presentation, ask your questions. And that way we won't interrupt town meeting and then we still have we have six months to debate and discuss the projects.
Or do we have any follow-up meetings set up to bring to town meeting?
Well, we have follow-up school tours.
Yeah, yeah, that's I guess that's what I meant.
Yeah, and that'll be part of the slide presentation. So we really want to get our community back in our schools now that they have more knowledge about what we're wanting to do and why we want to do it. So we have three meetings set up prior to the town. So we're we're excited and we have a lot of information to share, but we want to listen more than sharing information. So we have that balance for for that presentation, more listening than talking.
Such good work. Thank you.
It's been exciting. We're gonna ask them.
Great and powerful project. And I just appreciate your dedication to really diving deep on all of the, all of the details of this. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Budge's subcommittee doesn't have anything to report. Budget will go before town meeting. Likely be approved. Looking forward to that. Uh, policy subcommittee?
Nothing to reveal or change.
Perhaps we can touch on your, the summer retreat idea. I was thinking maybe we, policy subcommittee can be talked about at the summer retreat as to what policies we want to review next year.
Absolutely.
An all-hands-on-deck approach before we kick off the year. And it's touched on the Shaker Building Committee and then I need to just see if everybody has a new tech update. I do know that CPAC has an event scheduled, unfortunately it's the same time as town meeting. So if you have an interest involved, I'll make a decision.
Justin, we did submit the to the SOI to the MSBA for the high school rule from the high school portal.
Oh, great.
Just submitted.
Perfect.
By the date. So that's, we're just waiting for MSBA.
What what is the expectation on turnaround in time for a decision?
It's fortified months.
Oh, fortified months. Okay. Awesome. Uh, that rolls through the subcommittee reports. So there's no other new business or old business that we wish entertained. I'll ask for a motion. I'll make a motion. Probably easier if I just make a motion, just double check. And we do have any to go to executive session this evening?
Yes.
Great. Let the fun continue. I I moved, I'm making a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of contract negotiations for non-union personnel with no intention to return to open session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, the keep of saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Right, we will allow for an opportunity to clear the room and then we can move into executive session.